Good evening and welcome to our Alaska Conference Seventh Day Adventist Town Hall this evening. I want to thank you all for joining us and we're going to try to get through this as quickly but as thoroughly as possible. So if you have questions, we want you to make sure that you get them into us. Believe Elder Santos is monitoring that so we can make sure that we get your questions answered if we can, or if we need to do a little research, we'll have those available to us. All right. Elder Santos, is there somewhere that the folks need to go to call in or the number that we have or is it just, okay, would you give that?
Flash it on screen.
Thank you. So this evening, as we're getting this number together, I'd just like to think for a few moments, here's where your questions can go. You can text them to 360-362-0417. Again, 360-362-0417. You text them there and Elder Santos will make sure that we can grab ahold of those and answer them for you. This evening, as I've been thinking about the last few months of our world and what's been going on with it. We've had the coronavirus and the pandemic that stemmed from it. We've had the political season, the elections that have come through it. That we've had unrest and so forth in our social atmosphere and all of those kinds of things. And I know that some of the things that I've heard, talked about, some of the comments I've heard, shared, some of the things that have been said have stemmed from the place of what's going on, the change that's happening. And sometimes that can devolve down into fear and then our fear comes out in various ways. Fear can come out in panic. It can also come out in anger. It can come out in ways that are hurtful, both to the person who has that fear as well as those that it strikes. And so as I was thinking about that in the where we're at right now in our world, our country, perhaps even our own personal lives, this text came to me from Second Timothy. The Apostle Paul is writing to his young protege and he's evidently Timothy had some need for a little encouragement as well. And so he says to him in Chapter 1 of verse 6, Second Timothy, it's Chapter 1 of verse 6, he says, "For this reason, I remind you to fan into flame the gift of God, which is in you through the laying on of my hands. For God gave us a spirit not of fear, but of power and love and self-control." So here's the great apostle and he's sharing with this young pastor, he's saying, "Look, you're going to go through some stuff here, young pastor, but it's going to be okay." The Apostle Paul has weathered all kinds of scenarios. He's weathered all kinds of circumstances. He's weathered all kinds of things that most of us would never even hopefully contemplate within our lifetime. He's been shipwrecked. He's been beaten. He's been kicked out of synagogues. He's been run around. He's been chased away. He's been, all kinds of things have happened to, in fact, he's writing this to this young pastor from prison. This is one of the last epistles that the Apostle Paul would write. And so he's sharing with this young pastor and he's saying, "Look, yeah, we've got to deal with some things that we do that happens to us in life, but it's going to be okay. And we don't have to have the spirit of fear. We don't have to be afraid of things that change. We don't have to be afraid of what's coming. Why? Because we have the spirit of power, God's Spirit, the one that has showered down upon us in response to the promise of Jesus Christ, the Holy Spirit that gives us the ability to live and to move and to breathe and to come together and to walk through the hard places. "Yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil. Why? Because you're with me, Lord. It's yours, Rod, and your staff that give me the strength and the comfort to make it through all the things that life may throw our way. And so we have the spirit of power. We have the spirit of love. Love is probably the most powerful salve medicine that mankind actually understands and knows. It's stronger than hate. It's stronger than bitterness. It's stronger than fear. It's stronger than anything if we will put our love into God with our whole heart, mind, and soul, and then we'll love one another as good neighbors should in the way that Jesus told us to. And when we have that love for one another and we're looking to bless one another and we're looking to do what what Jesus has called us to do, all of a sudden, not only are other people lifted, but somehow that reciprocates and lifts us as well. It gives us the sense of purpose. It gives us a sense of meaning and it gives us the sense that we are not enduring the things that we endure meaninglessly. Jesus is with us, guiding us, moving us, directing us, helping us. And talk about the great love at Calvary as he walked up the way of suffering, as he knew the rejection of the people, the very ones that he wanted to be close to at that moment. And yet he did it for us because he loved us. And that same love, that spirit of love that comes through Christ to us and then through us will lift us beyond what is going on and the circumstances that we feel. And when we do that and we begin to experience that, it does help to lift us. The old story is told of a gentleman who was lost in a snowstorm. It was a blizzard. And as he was stumbling along trying to find his way, he couldn't see his hand hardly in front of his face until he stumbled upon someone else. And just about the time he wanted to give up, he found this other person already down. And he reached down and he said, "Hey buddy, let's get going here. You can't, you can't rest. You can't sleep. We've got to keep going." And onward they went and for I don't know how long, but finally they found a light in the distance and they walked to the light and it turned out to be a cabin. And they found safety and in so loving that guy, trying to save his life, he saved his own life. And that's the power of love. That's the power of what constitutes who Jesus is. And then we have the spirit of self-control, the spirit of self-control. And this one's kind of hard for me. But when those people are doing things maybe we don't like, or something is happening to me that makes me uncomfortable or whatever it may be, we can look to Jesus, we can look to him and say, "Lord, help us to be like you in this situation. You had self-control when they were spitting on you. You had self-control when Peter was denying you. You had self-control when Judas was betraying you. You had self-control when your disciples forsook you. And you had self-control when they were beating you. And you had self-control when they were pounding the nails into your hands." And Lord, all I'm doing is feeling the impact of this pandemic along with all my brothers and sisters of faith as well as my brothers and sisters of the human family. And so help me to have this self-control I need to go out there and be a good witness for you and to and to get through this in a way that will allow me to keep my mind and my bodies together. So Jesus has not given us the spirit of fear, but he has given us the spirit of power and of love and of a sound mind. Let's pray together. Gracious Father in heaven, I want to thank you for that spirit that comes from you. It's so easy, Lord, to lose sight of that, to begin to allow our fears to bubble up into ways that are detrimental to who we are and ways that cause pain and anguish beyond what should be. And so I pray, Lord, that you will help us to tap into that spirit of power, that spirit of love and that spirit of self-control. And if we feel ourselves slipping out of that, Lord, help us to connect. Help us to connect with someone else who we can either minister to or who can encourage us. And I know you will do that for us. And I thank you for my brothers and sisters. And I ask, Lord, that you would have your protecting hand about them. And we're very grateful for how you've led, how you've guided us and how you continue to overshadow us. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen. Alrighty, this evening, our agenda is fairly simple. We're going to talk a little bit about COVID and then we're going to talk about some things that are coming up in the future. And then we'll have a quick financial report to let you know where the conference is standing right now. And then we'll be done for the evening. Again, I want to thank you and Elder Santos who just had that number where you can text your questions to. And so we ask that you do that. And whenever a question hits you, just text it. Don't wait for us to say, "Do you have any questions?" Go ahead and just text them in and we'll do our best to get to them. All right, COVID-19. Seems like this is the major subject and topic for everybody in our world right now and probably rightly so. We've been eight months into this in this country, thereabouts. And unfortunately, it has taken a toll on us both in life. We've, I think the last numbers I saw were a little over 260,000 Americans with over 3 million cases that have hit this country. And I've read other articles and things about those who get it and then have complications later on that goes with it and we don't know how many of those that encompasses, excuse me. So this stuff is real. It's not something to play with. It's not something to ignore. But again, we're not giving the spirit of fear either. So we want to do those things that are practical, those things that will help keep us safe, those things that will help keep our brothers and sisters safe and then encourage one another along the, on the journey here. Because as we know, the Bible says, "The night has come to pass." And what that means is that the night has come, but it won't stick around. So this coronavirus has come, but it will pass. We'll get through it and we're going to get through it because the Lord is going to keep us moving and guiding us. Having said that, Christians in general, Adventists in particular, we're not immune from this virus. God has not, in his wisdom and providence, shielded us from its effects and evidently expects us to be part of what everyone else is a part of. And so we're asking and encouraging that everyone at this stage of this pandemic, ensure that the things that are, the conferences asked for are followed so that we can limit any kind of exposure that possible to this. We have had members who have had this virus. It's not a pleasant thing. And so we, at the very least, and it can be quite deadly at its worst. So let's do the things. Let's be proactive. Let's not wait on what the state says or doesn't say or whatever, but let's be the ones who lead the way in compassion. Let's lead the way in looking out for one another. And if you can put on those protocols there, Elder Santos, so that we can see them. Again, these are just some basic common sense kind of things to help us within do this. We want somebody designated to implement the plans that we have. And we talk about reopening plans. We're talking about having in-person gatherings under the church's banner during this pandemic. Follow these guidelines unless the city, unless your community or the state somewhere along the way has extra to do. Okay, there are some places that require masks or a face covering. Anchorage is a place where if you're in a public space, environment, they require a face covering. All right, singing. We're that no singing highly recommended really is congregational singing. We're pushing a lot of air and the way this virus is transmitted is very easy. Too many choirs understand what happens when you're doing this kind of communal singing and then somebody comes in positive. So special music, that kind of thing is fine, but be very careful with the congregational singing. Make sure you're following again the city mandates, that you watch the social distancing, so forth. In Anchorage for worship, they have said 50% of building capacity under fire codes. So whatever, whatever your building can hold, that 50% of that is what they're saying. So if you need to do two services to help facilitate or that kind of thing, be creative. Social distancing you see there, sanitize, make sure things are, especially the high-touch areas like door handles, toilet flushers, etc., sinks where people wash their hands and so forth. So we ask that that be done on an hourly basis. No potlucks, no communal food is the idea. So if you're going to have some kind of food, it needs to be in a, where it's been prepared in a way that hasn't been, doesn't need to be touched and individual portions already done. So no communal food. And then here's, you know, a lot of people have been worried about the need for connection. And that is, that is a very real need out here. So provide online service. If you're unfamiliar with how to do that or don't know if you have the ability to do that, most, most of the churches have really stepped up and provided some kind of way to be connected together in the online community. But if you need some help, feel free to call the conference. We're happy to help where we can. We're working with some other, a church or two right now. So help, help keep that connection. And where some members may be less comfortable in person, especially during this time when we're experiencing the kind of high numbers that we are, we've had very high numbers for the last couple of days. And it's not slowing down at the moment. So do something, and this is a good time to be creative. This is a good time to be thinking about this kind of ministry. It's a good time to get involved in that. And it can be a legacy ministry once we get beyond where we're at right now, where we can keep those things happening, keep those feelers out there in the community because everyone is online now, I can assure you, for the most part. All right, maintain attendance list for contact tracing if needed. I can tell you that as I have talked to professionals in the healthcare world, that they are overwhelmed in trying to help people know who's been exposed and who ought to be tested and so forth. And so when we're doing this, we're helping to ensure that that is, that is helpful to those who have to have it. And it's only needed, it's only used if needed. And I think we've used it a couple of times, maybe. We're the ones who did the contact tracing at the request of those who are responsible for it. So, and they only need to be held for 30 days and then you can dispose of them. And they're maintained at the local congregation. And then make sure that your signage is clear so that when people come to church, you understand what we're asking of them. When they come in, And that is clearly, uh, clearly put on the signage on a door, especially the entrance to the church. Okay, so we're, we're asking that to stay, stay alert, stay, uh, stay on top of it. It's usually in a time like this where we get into a, a situation and things and we can get lax. Let's not get lax. Let's continue moving forward. We uh, nobody is asking anyone to stop or shut down or do anything different. But other than to make sure that we stay alert, stay vigilant while we're doing our ministry and our worship. Okay, so we appreciate, um, we appreciate your help. We appreciate how well uh, all of our congregations have been able to tackle this, this moment in time. I think that's all we have right at the moment for COVID. Uh, so thank you again. And again, if you have questions, whether it be about this subject or any other subject that may be on your mind, please text it to three six zero, three six two, zero four, one seven. All right, Elder Santos, we'll, uh, let's move into the next piece, which will be or should we do our financial?
Yes. Or do you want to talk about the statement, Elder Miller?
What's that?
Uh, do you want to talk about the NPUC statement on Supreme Court ruling?
Uh, yeah, sure. The MPUC uh, attorney uh, put out a statement to to all of the conferences, and I believe it was in the online uh, as well that the Supreme Court made a ruling in New York in the case of New York City, where uh, the archdiocese there um, was unhappy with the way things were, were going on. And then, and so they went to the spring, they took a case to the spring court. And the Supreme Court somewhat sided with the archdiocese and said that the state couldn't be doing, couldn't tell the, couldn't do, um, couldn't tell them what to do if a secular uh, entity didn't have to do the same thing essentially. However, uh, it was a very specific, according to what our, the attorney said is a very specific case, it's um, it's not yet open to everybody or every house of worship or every situation. It's a very uh, localized and very targeted uh, ruling at the moment. So we're still watching it. We're still seeing where that goes and how that uh, comes down. Um, so we are, we are looking at, paying attention to that right now. So don't, it's, it didn't open up and say houses of worship don't have to listen to what the state says about this pandemic. All it said is essentially is that for that specific situation, they, they should be uh, they should not be um, have more restrictions on them than, than on other businesses. All right, here's, I got a question here. Okay, uh, what, what's the plan for moving forward regarding the church service inside building? So, and, and you say limits for Anchorage is fifty, but mandate says ten percent building um, on the modified hunker down. All right, so good questions. So your, your local congregation really is the one that's determining uh, when is a good time to return to an in-person service? The conference is not mandating whether you can do that or not. Uh, what we're men, what we're, what we have said to churches is when you do, we have these protocols that, that will help mitigate the spread of the virus. So we would ask you that when you do return to insert, in uh, an in-person service, that you follow those, those protocols. Uh, so it's up to the local congregation really, when, when they're comfortable, what their comfort level is in moving back to an in-service uh, situation. I know of one congregation that was doing in, uh, had, had gone back to it. And then as the numbers climbed, determined that perhaps for their context, it would be better to wait until after the holidays. And so they went back to the online uh, situation. But that was a congregation, a local congregation determination. All right, uh, so on the, on the modified hunker down order here in Anchorage, yes, uh, most, most of it is at ten percent or actually it's six people uh, in a gathering or um, and I forget why the, what the ten people gathering was about. But anyway, it's, it's, it's ten people or below actually, except for, and here's the, here's the caveat, except for uh, religious services and political gatherings. Uh, so, but they are limited to fifty percent of building capacity. So it's an exemption within the, within the uh, executive order there. So thank you for that question and helping to clarify that, okay? So the houses are, are religious services have been, have somewhat of an exemption to the, to the uh, to the limit of people. All right, thank you. Okay, uh, are we ready for our financial?
Sure. Good evening and thank you all for joining. I appreciate the opportunity to update the conference as a whole as to where we are on our finances. When I was growing up, I grew up in Southern California and we lived right next to probably, I don't know, thirty to fifty acres of orange trees. And so oranges were, it wasn't quite year-round, but it was pretty close to that and always available. And I remember growing up and reading a book called Trapped in Death Valley. And that had to do with some wagon trains that were headed to California. It wasn't right in eighteen forty-nine, but it wasn't too long after that. And they were trying to find a shortcut and instead of a shortcut, they ended up in Death Valley. And they spent several months there and part of the group sent out scouts to try and find when, where there would be people and a way out. And after several months, um, finally a couple of their scouts came back and they brought with them um, bags of oranges. And the kids had been so long without any type of fruit or a fresh item at all, that they kind of just sucked on one little piece of the orange at a time. And I don't know that we've quite been in Death Valley this last year, but there have times when I thought that we might feel a little bit like that. And so um, but I do think um, we did better than I expected or at least have through ten months. And so I think we have quite a few oranges to be thankful for the blessings that we have received from Christ. Um, for the month of October in twenty nineteen, we had five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars. And in the month of October for twenty twenty, we received four hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars of tithes. So as you can see, that is a decrease of twenty-three percent. I thought we were a little low on one of the churches and it was one of our bigger churches. And I did learn after the fact that um, in the process of changing over treasures, they were unable to get their online giving. And what you might be interested in knowing that, that we have been running between seventy-five and eighty percent of all tithes in the conference since April first through the end of October, has been coming in through our local churches' online giving or through the conference online giving. So I'm thankful for all of that support that has continued. Um, we're, we're much higher than many of the other conferences around the division. And so for the treasures and the churches that have taken the extra step to promote the online giving, I thank you. Let's move to the next slide, which is our year-to-date tithe. In twenty nineteen, we had three million, four hundred and seventy, almost seventy-six thousand. And for twenty twenty, we had three million, two hundred and eighty-three thousand. So we are at a decrease of five point five four percent for the year. Um, but again, this is much better than some of my attempts early on at forecasting where we might be. So you might say, okay, we're not too bad a shape. It's not great, but we're not too bad a shape for income. How are we doing on the expenses? So on the next slide, um, we had a budget that was voted by our executive committee at about the first of the year. And that original budget before COVID hit was for four million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand for the ten months ending October thirty-first. After COVID, um, for the ten months, we were aiming to save about fifty thousand a month. And through October, that would have been four hundred thousand dollars. You can look at our actual expenses through October and we are just over four million dollars. Um, two main areas that were a little higher than what we originally forecast. Um, I thought we were going to save a great deal of money on camp meeting. But since we were unable to do it in person, um, we did spend quite a bit on equipment that I thought was not going to be money that was spent. So that was part one. Part two, our tithe has turned out better than expected. And so the percentages that are sent on for retirement to the union office, to the division and the general conference have been a little higher than that COVID budget would indicate. So that's a short recap of where we are financially overall. I think it's been a pretty good year. We are um, as administrators, starting to process um, several candidates so that some of the churches that have had vacancies in their pastoral positions, um, we will be working towards staffing those. I think the first person since COVID hit will be visiting Alaska next week. Um, thank you. And if you have any questions, remember that number. You can text them and also check on the Facebook feed as well. Again, thank you each and everyone for your faithfulness and support of God's work, both with your finances and with your talents and friendship.
Thank you, Jim, for, for that update. Appreciate that. And again, thank you for your giving. I just wanted to go over several of the important dates that you might want to jot down or you should receive it from our Around Alaska Conference email that our communications department sends out. But on the thirteenth, our new executive committee will be meeting by Zoom only. And this will be for a special training on being an executive committee member. And on notice on the date too, on December twenty-fourth through the third, our office will be closed. By the way, during this time, since for the past several weeks, our office has been uh, on a bare, bare-bones staffed, uh, staff commanding the, the office. And we have at least one or two individuals there that are taking care of the office, but the rest of us are working remotely. But during this holiday season, December twenty-fourth through the third, we will be closed. And looking into the new year, you will see that our elders training, our annual elders training is uh, is on, on January twenty-two to the twenty-third. And uh, but this will only be by Zoom. We'll be giving you more details about this. So just make sure you are um, preparing for, for, if you're an elder of a church, prepare to join us uh, by online to learn more, how to become an effective spiritual leader in your church and your community. And finally, I'd like to just to share that on February the seventh to ninth will be our pastors and teachers' joint meetings. And right now that is an in-person meeting and we're still working and planning for this event, whether this will, will be modified because of the COVID situation. And uh, just wanted to, to share in, you know, this is a season that we, we remember our loved ones, our family. This Christmas season is an opportunity that we, we give to each other. But the part that I want you to note that uh, the, the Pioneer Auditorium, if you see in the slide here, the flooring, the flooring, we've been raising funds to, to, to um, to be able to provide a nice, solid floor for auditorium. You should have received information on this for the past several months, but um, we'd like to, to appeal to you that if, as the Lord has blessed you and the Holy Spirit, this is part you to give, you can go to your church website, if not to the conference website, and help us meet our goal here. We need basically fifteen thousand to meet this goal. And uh, for our auditorium improvement phase one, we'd love to have flooring there, God willing, when we have our camp meeting in person next year. So this time we're going to turn it over to, to Elder Miller for, for our closing comments here.
I just wanted to express my, my appreciation to, to all of our pastors and our teachers as they've had to flex from normal ways of doing things to uh, doing things under unique circumstance. Our, our teachers have just been phenomenal. Uh, we really appreciate how they have handled this. Uh, the student body senses is fairly strong right now. In fact, a couple of our schools have waiting lists of students. And so we're praising the Lord for just the incredible um, work that and ministry that our teachers have done. I also want to thank our pastors in the cooperative nature that uh, you've expressed and the way you have creatively flexed to engage people, connect with people online, lead your congregations in that way. And so we're, we're very appreciative of, of where that is. I think one of the reasons that our conference is standing as strong as it is right now is due to that, uh, that leadership. And so we're, we're very appreciative of our pastors. We're very appreciative of our members. Yeah, without you and the strength that you have, the, the ability to be resilient, the um, continued compelling uh, love that you have for Jesus and seeking to do his mission uh, due to your energy and your generosity and your faithfulness, our conference is leading by percentage baptisms in the North Pacific Union right now. We are actually uh, over a hundred percent, yeah, a hundred, over a hundred percent of where we were last year within this pandemic, social distance and whatever. And it, and Paul is right when he wrote in Romans chapter eight, there's nothing, nothing that can separate us from the love of God. Uh, social distancing can't do it, pandemics can't do it, elections can't do it. Social unrest can't do it. All of, all of those things, all it does is open our hearts up and say, you know what? I think we need something more. We need someone bigger and uh, more powerful than who we are to help us. And because of what you guys have done and, and what you have accomplished, um, we have over a hundred new brothers and sisters in the Adventist faith. And uh, so we thank you for your love. We thank you for your care and creativity and your cooperation as well. So we're looking forward to that. Another area that, that we have just been so blown away with, one of the, we were very concerned earlier in the year. we were very concerned earlier in the year about Arctic Mission Adventure. And uh, and we still remain concerned, of course, but uh due to the generosity uh of our Alaskan family, but also the, the Greater uh North Pacific Union Family and NAD Family, North American Division Family. Um, it looks like that our Arctic Mission Adventure financially is gonna stay strong as well. Uh, I don't know if everybody understands, but it's a donor-funded uh mission unlike what the conference operating uh operations, which we operate off of tide and so forth. The, the Arctic Mission is operated straight out of donors uh funding that. And so we're very grateful uh the way the Lord has opened up the windows of heaven. And uh I think we're standing right now probably at about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the year. And we're looking to, to hit um the four hundred thousand goal that we have set for maintaining a very healthy financial situation for the Arctic Mission. So we're grateful for that. We're um, we're looking again as uh Brother Jensen mentioned that uh we're looking at pastors again. We had a kind of a moratorium on hiring for a while to see where we would be financially and how that would work out. Very expensive to move pastors and teachers and so forth. And uh especially with the stuff going on with this COVID and, and so forth. So we're very grateful that we're able to begin that process again. Uh, I, I just look for it for those of you who are in need of a pastor. It's not gonna be a, a real quick turnaround, I'm afraid, but, but we are beginning to move anyway. So we're very grateful again uh for that reality now happening. Again, um, appreciate your time. We thank you so much. We just want to keep you posted of where we're at. It's been a busy few months here um over the fall. And uh we're just grateful for all the support that we have felt uh from our, our family here in Alaska. We wish you a good evening and uh a wonderful and restful Sabbath coming up.
I'd like to, to just uh read one verse on behalf of the staff here, just uh, since it's our Christmas holiday season here in Matthew one, and she will bring forth a son, and you shall call his name Jesus, for he will save his people from their sins. Behold, the virgin shall be with child and bear a son, and they shall call his name Emmanuel, which is translated, God with us. So everyone, thank you on behalf of Elder Miller, our treasurer, Jim Johnson, our directors and staff. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. God bless you. Let's have a word of prayer to close our time here together. Gracious, loving Father, we thank you for your goodness, your mercies, your love, especially for sending Jesus, Lord, to come to this world of ours, to live and die and, and to be resurrected and right now to intercede in our behalf and preparing your Father to come back soon. Your Father, we pray that during this holiday, we may have that spirit of love, dear Lord, that you a model while you are here on earth. We pray that we will also share, dear Father, that compassion and that pa- that passion to reach as many people so they will know the Living Father, they would know Jesus Christ. Dear Father, we pray now that you will continue to keep your, your, your divine hands upon your people, especially in this conference, that you will protect, dear Lord, that you will bless and give us your favor. More so, dear Father, as we, we live in each day during this holiday season, help us to always focus to honor you, to glorify your precious holy name. Thank you so much for allowing us, dear Lord, to partner and serve you. This is our prayer in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you so much, everyone. Good night.